Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We start today's meeting then with the public hearing on the adoption of the building code ordinance. So once again, Mr. Griffith.
I should have brought my notebook with me. Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, Madam Administrator, the item they have before you this evening is a public hearing for the adoption of our building code. This is a retroactive action which will go back to 2015. In 2018, 2019, we were looking at the building code from the state and we had enacted ordinances with the townships and the small cities that we work with in order to have them current with the state building code and also so they wouldn't fall into arrears with ISO, the insurance service organization, which provides homeowner's insurance ratings. So in order to keep current with that, we encouraged the local jurisdictions to adopt a perpetual clause where when the state adopted it, they would adopt it as well to have that window of noncompliance as small as possible, if at all. So we've incorporated that into the ordinance and as you can see, we have a red line version that we had gone through and we used as a model for the townships and also for the small cities that we provide building permitting and inspection services for. And for some reason, I don't know, I've been trying to figure out, we didn't bring the ordinance to the county board. All of our jurisdictions that we provide building permitting and inspection services for adopted it. We have copies of that. They're current. They're in compliance, but we are not. So Mr. Canaan felt that it would be best for us to adopt the ordinance as soon as possible, make it retroactive to 2015, to the 2015 code, and that when the next version comes out, which will probably be next year, if not the following year from the state, that it will automatically be adopted. Now, there was a little question that came up with the Physical Development Committee this morning. If there's a portion of the code or maybe an appendix, it's usually something that's brought into question. And in the past, that's usually been where the appendices are questioned sometimes as those come out. The energy code, when it first came out several years ago, was a really big point of contention with the construction community and how that was going to be interpreted and how it was going to be inspected. As we've seen, that's very much diminished and energy efficiency and also, you know, solar panels, wind turbines has become a very vibrant and growing part of the construction industry. And the state has a big part in regulating that and interpreting those rules and regulations that we have that the inspectors use every day in the field and how they interpret those for resiliency and sustainability. So they're a real key part of that. And I talk a little bit about that in our proclamation that y'all have on the consent agenda today. So this ordinance is really a cleanup to make sure that we're in compliance and that we stay in compliance in the future. And I, like I said, I don't know how we didn't get this done in 2018, 2019, but there were a lot of things going on and it just fell through the cracks. So we're hoping to get this taken care of. We've not heard anything. We're not adopting anything new. It's the current code that's already been adopted by the state. We're just putting it on our books just to cover all the bases. So nothing new. We're out of the ordinary and the next ordinance or the next building code will probably be next year or the early 2025. And I'll be glad to answer any questions y'all have about the building code or about the adoption of it today.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just want to tease you a little bit. It's not always that someone, as they're leaving, looks to see, what did I forget? And I want to clean it all up before I go. So we wish you well in your new endeavor and I think this is a good thing to have found and it cleaned up before you go. So thank you.
Thank you. It came up in an odd way. It came up by way of a floodplain question because we're in the process of getting our floodplain ordinance updated with some new flood maps that are in the western part of the county where we've not had FEMA flood maps. So Kristi Gross in our office is leading those floodplain efforts and working with the township. So that's going to be coming in the next couple of months. So that ball is already in motion. So that was where the question came from and then got to look in and realized we didn't do ours. So I don't know how that happened, but it did. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You may stand by if we have a public question.
Will do. Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll open up the public hearing then. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the adoption of the building code ordinance? Is there anybody in the room here to speak for or against the building code ordinance? Is there anybody online last time? Is there anybody here to speak for or against the adoption of the building code ordinance?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
I'll make a motion to approve the building code ordinance.
All right. I have a motion to adopt the building code ordinance.
I'll second.
And I have a second. And I might add that this also comes from the recommendation of the Physical Development Committee. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have some. We can perhaps bring it up on another day. And we have some discussion about, and if you look at on page six, section 1704, and in it refers to Minnesota Rule 1300-0230 and then also Minnesota Statute 326B 139. The Minnesota rule, specifically, I'm looking at it. It basically says there shall be hereby created a Board of Appeals, a local Board of Appeals, and that would consist of members, not as we talked, in my mind at least, at the Physical Development Committee about a hearing judge. And then subsequently, Minnesota Statute 326B deals with if it is judged by the, if the person so-called aggrieved does not agree with the local Board of Appeals, then they can appeal it by virtue of 326B to the Commissioner of Department of Labor and Industry. All I'm saying is that another day, I don't understand how a single hearing examiner, at least by Minnesota law, can comply with the Minnesota Rule 1300-0230. I got that right? Yes. And so I'm saying that I think more discussion needs to be had on this one. I certainly agree with the sense of adopting the code. We need to do that. But I do think in my mind that the rules are clear, that we do need a local building Board of Appeals, not unlike what the city has. They consist of members who are qualified by experience and training to pass on such matters.
Does anybody else have a question or concern, discussion?
I just, I question the writing on this because it says an appeal may be made to a Board of Appeals assembled by the state of Minnesota.
So my recommendation here is that we will have a discussion about this. We'll ask Mr. Canaan to weigh in and get some interpretation on that so that we are definitely following the law. But that's not the question that we're dealing with today. We're simply dealing with adopting the building code ordinance and we'll figure out about the Board's appeals at a later date. Mr. Canaan, do you have anything?
I don't know what I would say, at least in the citations I noted, that the state of Minnesota, Department of Industry, they have a Board of Appeals, yes, that would convene after the local board was challenged. But this also suggests the local board is the first in line to accept a challenge by a local unit or government on an appeal to the Building and Safety Code.
Mr. Canaan, do you have something to add?
This has come up very rarely in the time that I've been here. And Mr. Griffith can correct me if I'm wrong, but the rare opportunities that it has come up, I believe Dolly, the Department of Labor and Industry, has this appeals board and that we have worked with Dolly and Dolly has said, if you want to send appeals of any building code interpretations to this board, they would handle those appeals. I'll have to look at the statute because this issue, I wasn't aware of it before this morning, but Mr. Griffith, again, can correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially that process and the rare opportunities this has come up has worked acceptably as far as we're concerned. All I would say as far as creating a local Board of Appeals potentially, you know, it needs to be staffed and it needs to be staffed by people that have expertise in the building code industry. We struggle, you know, with some of our volunteer boards and commissions, like the Board of Adjustment comes to mind where, you know, if you meet so infrequently, it's really a hard thing to come up with people that are willing to serve on a board that have the necessary expertise.
Right. So again, we'll come back to this issue. We'll ask for you to do some research for us. We'll talk about that.
Mr. Chair, did I say I don't think difficulty should be the measure by which we weigh whether or not there's a local opportunity for a Board of Appeals? I understand it's difficult. I understand we're talking about something that may never happen or rarely, but nonetheless, Minnesota rules. And it's a shall. It's not an if. It's a, or maybe. It's a shall. Create a local Board of Appeals and that's what we're going to do today as we adopt this. So Mr. Motion, Mr. President, I, Mr. Chair rather, I would, you have a motion and a second, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We can proceed.
Thank you very much. Are there any other discussions? All right. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. All right. The motion is adopted and the adoption of the building code is adopted. So thank you very much, Mr. Griffith, for your work. We appreciate that. And Mr. Canaan has taken notes on the discussion here and he will inform us at a later date of those jurisdictional issues. Thank you very much. Consent agenda. All right. Approve the April 18th, 2023 Homestead County Board Minutes. Proclaim Foster Care Awareness Month. Letter C, Proclaim Supervised Visitation Awareness Month. Letter D, Proclaim Mental Health Awareness Month. Letter E, Proclaim National Nurses Month. Letter F, Proclaim May as Building Safety Month. Letter G, Quotes and Bid for Seasoned Supply of Services and Materials to Maintain County Roads. Letter H, Donation of Block Two, Block One, Conrad W. Bars Subdivision to the local HRA. Letter I, Sale of Tax Forfeited Land Parcel to City of Rochester. Letter J, Contracts for Law Enforcement Labor Services. Now here, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. The consent agenda is adopted. We are at number five, Discussion Decision Items on Homestead County Public Health Emergency.
I'm short, so. Good morning, Chairman of the Board, Commissioners. Denise Daniels, Director of Homestead County Public Health. With me today, I have Megan Sheridan as an FYI, who was recently promoted to our new Associate Director to replace Mike Milas. So we are here this morning as the Board has been provided with information around repealing the local public health emergency around COVID-19. And so we're going to take this opportunity this morning to provide a little bit of overview of the journey we've been on the last several years. And then I think at the end, Mr. Canaan and Mr. Granzi also have an area for you guys to consider as well. So next slide, please. So briefly, there's a lot here, right? Because we've been going at this for about three years. I'm going to give some key highlights of the timeline and to our response efforts. So in early February of 2020, we began tracking case counts for what was called a new and novel virus that had showed up in China. We knew that this had some implications for some seriousness related to public health. And so at the end of February, we acted, so February 26th, we activated our Incident Command system or structure here in Homestead County. On March 5th, as cases were starting to ramp up across the world, we held a joint press conference between Public Health, Homestead County, Homestead Medical Center, Mayo Clinic to explain what we knew at the time around this virus. On March 6th, the first COVID-19 case showed up in Minnesota. And on March 11th, we had our first local case here. And then on this 17th, the Board declared a public health emergency for Homestead County. On the very next day, one of the actions that was taken was we actually closed the buildings for safety reasons. And I think a really key point to note here, with less than two weeks from our first case in Homestead County, through the collaborative partnerships that we had, we stood up the Grand Park Drive-Thru Testing Site, which proved to be a significant contribution in this response. And you'll find out later in our after-action report, that was key to the relationships and the collaboration we had already had in place over years, to be able to stand that up in less than two weeks. Unfortunately, on April 2nd, we recorded our first death in Homestead County, which I think started making this really real for folks. Fast forward to May, we locally started handling at Public Health our own case investigation and contact tracing. Significance of that was we were able to get to positive cases much quicker than the state of Minnesota was, which again, we feel strongly helped reduce the spread and helped save lives. We also recognized early in May of 2020, the impact this was going to take on our staff. And so we activated a resiliency branch, if you will, to our response to make sure we were taking care of the mental health needs and the trauma that was being experienced by staff having to work on some really difficult cases, having to do with a very political incident as well, to just help them navigate those difficult times. In July, we stood up the COVID-19 Dashboard, which again, created a really transparent way for us to be able to communicate with the community where we were with cases, where the pandemic was headed, so that people could make informed decisions for their own safety as well. In August, we had moved, when we activated our Incident Command System, we were in the Emergency Operations Center with the help of our Sheriff's Department, which again, was a really key partnership for us as we navigated a very large Incident Command structure. So in August, we moved from that Emergency Operations Center back to Public Health in what we called our Department Operations Center there. So next slide. Now we're in 2021. Oh, I should add. In November, we closed Grand Park Testing Drive-Thru of 2020 because of the weather, right? In Minnesota, the weather. And we felt we had, we really researched and tried to find drive-through options because of the infection, just because of how infectious this was and contagious, and just couldn't find a viable option that we felt was easily accessible. And so then this testing moved back to our healthcare partners there and that transition went well. And then in December, vaccines came. So from March to December, we had no vaccines for being able to respond to this. And so on the 21st of December of 2020, we were able to provide our first vaccine to our local EMS. So fast forward to 2021. In January, we went through that. If you remember, I'll just say it's kind of the fiasco of the way the state laid out prioritization. So we started through our Phase One vaccine distribution. In February, we were able to stand up a mass vaccination site out to Rochester Community and Technic College, again, along with our partners there, as well as then forming strike teams because we knew we needed to get vaccines out to the public in the most efficient and equitable way that we could. And also, I wouldn't say we celebrated, but we came to the one-year mark of the response as well. In April of that year, we put in place a plan to be able to help businesses through being able to get vaccinated. And we would send strike teams actually out to different businesses so that we could again reach people where they were at and make it convenient for folks. Then fast forward to June, things started quasi, right? Settling down a little bit and we announced demobilization plans for our staff. In July, we officially deactivated what we would call COVID 1.0 because as you all know, things ramped back up again. We had about a month where we were trying to get staff some time off, et cetera, and then the Delta variant hit us. And so then we called that COVID 2.0 and we reactivated a much smaller scale of Incident Command and went back to work with what we needed to do. Fast forward, then we hit 2022 timeline. So you can advance the slide, please. The Omicron wave hit us and so we continued with all of the Phase One or all of the first round of vaccines for individuals. And then we were coming on a point where boosters were due. And so then we continued with those efforts as well. In March, we once again began conversations around demobilization and we officially deactivated that second round of COVID response on the 31st of March, 2022. I would say June, July, September, October, December. This was our process for really transitioning work back into normal public health operations. So our Disease Prevention and Control Team took on a bulk of being able to help with mitigation strategies for local businesses, daycares, et cetera. We continued to offer vaccine clinics and we ramped up a plan to be able to help serve those experiencing homelessness for isolation and quarantine as well there. So that brings us to 2023, where in January, we shared out our after-action report. Super important to be able to go back and reflect on what went well through the response efforts and what we could use improvement on. And since we have continued, again, we still offer vaccines within our immunization clinics at Public Health, so we are still willing to serve there. We have created a COVID-19 epidemiology report, of which has been posted to the website. That really goes through, and Megan's going to share a little bit of the data with you today of how we fared within the response and within the pandemic. In April of this year, actually just a couple of days ago, you got your last EPI report for COVID-19. And in May, we are here to ask to repeal and end the current Public Health Emergency Declaration. So Megan's going to share with you next some of the data and how we fared. I know that's been a key question of like, with all of this work, how did we do in Homestead County with our pandemic response?
Thanks, Denise. Good morning, everybody. My name's Megan Sheridan. I am the Program Manager of our Epidemiology Surveillance and Preparedness Team. And soon, like Denise mentioned, transitioning to the Associate Director. So no surprise, I'm going to share some data with you. That's been one of my key roles throughout the pandemic response. And I want to call out today, I'm going to be sharing two documents we put together by our team. One was the EPI report Denise mentioned. This was put together by our Infectious Disease EPI, Matthew Gil York, who spent and took a really good look at each of our years for COVID, but then was able to put a comprehensive report. And we thought this was important to do because COVID was such a learning experience for us that we wanted to document what we saw, but we also know that there's a lot of lessons learned. I'll also be touching on the after-action report that our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator put together, Caitlin Anderson, that I know some of you have been able to see. So let's dive into the data. So I'm going to call out cases, hospitalizations, deaths, and vaccinations. So here in Homestead County, that is our case, the number of cases to date as of last week from the report. I know this question was brought up a lot during our response efforts and, you know, it gained some media attention as well, is that we had a higher case rate than most of the state and that sometimes Homestead County had one of the highest case rates in the nation. I want to put it out there, hopefully ease a little bit. That was due to our huge access to testing, that we had Grand Park, but then we also had the relationship with Mayo and OMC to receive testing. We also are a healthcare community and so we know that we, just by nature of the professions of needing people to get testing, but also because we are a healthcare community and due to policies to protect the healthcare organizations, they were doing a lot of testing as people were coming in to receive treatment or for procedures and things. So being able to dive through and dig into the data, I feel very confident to say that is why we saw those higher rates. But it's also important, when I get to the next slides, that that didn't necessarily translate into those hospitalizations and deaths. What we did see too, when we dig closer or more into our data, is that we did see a significant disparity. And then when I say significant, we actually looked and did a significant statistic test to show that there was significant disparities between our Black African-American population and our Hispanic population when you compare it to our white population. So just to throw some numbers at you, because that's what I like to do. So for our white population, our incidence rate was 978.5 per 10,000 Homestead County residents. When you look at our Black African-American population, that increases to 1,194. So you can see per 100, or per 10,000. And for Hispanic population, it was 1,140. So just looking at those numbers and kind of making everything more stabilized and equal to look at with our rates, we do start to see and dive into those disparities. If we move to our hospitalizations. So the graph on your right is our hospitalization trend over time. So you can see, and it's a little bit of a complex graph, but I know I've showed, we've spoken to this before. So the red line there is our daily ICU admissions. And then the, or I apologize, ever hospitalized. Oh, there's two. I don't know why there's two reds there, but we'll dive in. So first and foremost, the gray piece, which should be daily ICU. So that's looking at our daily admissions. And you can see from even the conversations with Denise, and if we were to overlay this with our cases, you'll see it's about on a two-week leg from when we saw those peaks. So you can see the peaks really starting to happen. Our first big one was right after Thanksgiving of 2020. I know people on our EPI team remember that Monday fondly of the day of like 500 cases that came through. At that point, we thought that was a lot, but that would, and then we hit with Omicron. I believe we processed over 2,000 cases in a day, just over a weekend and just at the height of it. So, but you can see those peaks that kind of trend with that. So that gray is daily ICUs. The yellow is going to be your daily non-ICU admissions. That black line is that ever hospitalized, so just tracking and you can kind of see those blips as it goes. And then you can see the ever ICU. What I think one thing that I really want to highlight is that ever ICU was fairly, on a fairly stable trajectory versus where you saw those big jumps with our ever hospitalizations. So going to the bullets, you can see our total hospitalizations and what made up of our ICU. So like I said, one thing I think is really important to call out. While we did have a higher case rate than the state of Minnesota, we had a lower hospitalization rate than the state of Minnesota. So our hospitalization rate was around 43 per 10,000 and the state was at 47 per 1, or per 10,000. So again, just being able to look and see like, yes, we had that, but the severity. The other thing I think is always important to call out too, when we talk about hospitalizations is, because we got this question a lot and how the data was collected. People that can be counted as a COVID hospitalization can be for or with COVID. So going in because you're having a very severe infection to COVID, but let's say you are also going to become a mom for the first time and you're going in for labor and delivery, they would test you and you would be counted as a hospital admission for COVID, even if you weren't going in for that. So just again, important clarification, there's a lot of us who have asked of, moving forward, it'd be great if we could get that distinction because it really helps us show the real burden on our hospitalization system. The majority of our hospitalizations were in older adults. However, when we looked at our Black African-American and Hispanic population, those tended to be much younger than the white and Asian Pacific Islander. Our Black hospitalization was one and a half times more than our white population when we look at rates and things. But then also, our Hispanic population was also much higher just overall as well. If we look at deaths. So to date, unfortunately, we've had If we look at deaths, so to date, unfortunately, we've had 237 deaths. Our death rate is much lower, it's almost half of what the state was. Again, calling that out. So again, going to kind of repeat this and repeat this, higher case rates, lower hospitalizations, but much lower deaths than what we saw at the state. You can see in the graph, right before we had vaccination, we were seeing a huge burden of our deaths happening in a congregate living setting. So that can be your long-term care facilities, group homes, things like that versus our private residence. As vaccination became more available, we saw that shift switch to where we were seeing more deaths in our private residence. Also, we do like to look at the death data in kind of those two different categories because it does paint a different picture for them. So with our congregate living, the average age of death was 87 years old. If we look at the private residence, it was 74 years old. Another important distinction we wanted to call out too is that for the private residence, there were much more deaths that occurred in males than in females. Almost, so 63% of our private resident deaths were in males versus if you look at the congregate living, it was a much more equal setting. We also did too see, again, consistent with what we saw with cases and with hospitalizations, Black and African American and Hispanic. We also saw disparities in the Asian Pacific Islander. And then, like I mentioned, males and age. So again, Matthew was able to dig much deeper and using some standardization. We potentially saw an excess deaths of 134% in African Americans and 86% in our Hispanic and 158% in our Asian Pacific Islander. And again, why we wanted to look at this data, take a little bit deeper, because I think there's a lot of lessons learned. There's a lot of equity questions I think we need to look at, especially as we prep and prepare for the next emergency that we'll see or any other infectious disease. Unfortunately too, we do see these disparities carry out and throughout a lot of our other metrics and indicators that we look in our community too. So again, getting this data, being able to carry that through and look at it, I think provides just a different picture than we've been able to show before. If we go to the next slide, this is looking at vaccinations. So I know when I presented before, we always were curious, so are we number one? Are we number two? Is Cook County beating us still with their like 10,000 population? But I will say throughout our response, we have been ranked as not only a top county in the state, but also in the nation. And that's also when we're looking from completed series, boosters, and up-to-date, because that language got a little tricky to follow as we move forward. One thing I really want to call out too, and Denise hit on this, is us as a public health agency, we've administered, it's actually over 26,000 vaccines in our community. I believe the real number is 26,586, just to be a little specific for you all. But it's something for us to be really, really proud of, if you think about it. It's not only doing the, those mass vaccine clinics that we were able to do, but it was also a lot of community partners and work. So going out to workplaces, working with various nonprofits in our community to do immunizations at temples, at churches, at community events, getting the word out, the education. A lot went into getting to that number and I think it is truly something to be celebrated, not only by our staff who've done it, but also from our community and those relationships that we have. And as Denise mentioned too, we still continue to administer COVID vaccines in our immunization clinic. I think we maybe get a one or a two here every so often. And we will be looking towards and to, as more recommendations come out around boosters, what that will look like for our clinic as well. So the next slide is just going to highlight strengths that were identified from our after-action process. And so this, how we go through an after-action process is, we really reflected as, what did we do well and what could we do better? And how we gathered this information was from those who were actually activated in the response and from their feedback, whether it was from a hot wash or kind of a fast focus group and from surveying. So you can see here, we have listed off numerous strengths for us, including highly skilled staff, consistent in accurate messaging, those partnerships. Our technology resources were huge for our vaccine clinics, being moved from having people to fill out paper to being able to register online and doing online consent. Denise mentioned the mental health and behavioral health support. This was hugely innovative for our county to put, to focus on this. This is actually one of the stories we're being asked by MDH to talk through as they're gathering COVID stories for their own after-action process, along with Grand Park. But then the collaboration, our vaccine response, and then just that internal capacity we had were some of our key strengths outlined. But there's always areas to improve and that's what the after-action process is. And so on the next slide, we have listed off our focus areas or opportunities for improvement. So communication strategies and capacity, as we all know, this COVID was a very divisive and there was a lot of misinformation, so there's always opportunities to improve. Our data sources aren't necessarily reflective on the partnerships we had with Mayo and OMC, but more so with our partnership with the Minnesota Department of Health and getting regularly timely information. Our physical infrastructure, so Denise mentioned first starting out in the EOC, in a very, not a great space for highly infectious disease, where you're all sitting in a really small room, but looking, really looking at, and the building of our DOC. The surveillance strategies for mental health risks, and that is just more around not being able to physically see people and check in, but having to think of innovative ways to be able to check on our staff. Training for incident command across the county. So one of the key strengths we had was we said that capacity. This wasn't just a public health response, this was a county response. We brought in a lot of people from different divisions and departments and teams to help, but one thing we learned was, not everyone knows what an ICS structure. And so I believe we've already started that process, that there is a yearly requirement now for people to just do a brief intro to incident command. Opportunities for improvement too were the isolation and quarantine plans for people experiencing homelessness. We had some really good opportunities and discussion with partners and will continue to with that. Mental health and social connectedness, again, COVID was, has been a, around, and a very long process for a lot of people to work through and just again, really wanting to honor and say, wanting some focus on that. Demobilization process for volunteers. So I mentioned all those vaccine clinics, so that was Olmsted County staff, but we also have a core of the medical reserve corps of volunteers who help support those vaccine clinics as well. And we realized a year later that they never went through a proper demobilization of, meaning they never sent an email that was saying, you are demobilized, which is part of the ICS process, but so we're noting that for next time. And then training. So this is an area that we've been focusing on. So there's been media training. We've already had around 10 staff go through media training, just because there was a lot of us having a lot of more contact with media during the pandemic, just from the subject matter expertise and needing that extra training. Radio training, so we utilize radios at Grand Park and during test vaccine events and that staff just didn't know how to use them and they're an important way for us to communicate. But then there was also the mention for de-escalation training. So whether that be someone coming in and having questions about COVID, about vaccines, but then also how we translate that to our work. And we've been able to partner with the sheriff's office and receive some great training from them around de-escalation with that. So we're already starting to work on a lot of these opportunities for improvement, but just wanted to lay those out there for you. So I believe, I'm going to toss it back to Denise, who's going to toss it back to Travis.
All right. So as we come to this time and you're looking at ending or repealing the public health emergency that was put in place in March of 2020, just a couple of things we want to remind you of. We do at public health, we will continue to monitor and have surveillance systems set up, so should something make a drastic change, we'll be ready and prepared and we'll see that in a timely manner. Also want to remind you that ending of this resolution only will affect Olmsted County policies and procedures that were put in place at some, which have already been turned back as well. And that the federal emergency public health declaration will end on May 11th of this year. And I think our board is looking at it, we have it for May 2nd, and so that will be coming away as well. But otherwise, I think there is one decision out of that repealing of the resolution, I think that there's, we're looking for some discussion or decision-making on it, so.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels, one of the things that I noticed in the litany in it was, we moved at a certain point from doing case follow-up locally to having the state health department do case follow-up. Can you just, you know, if we were to do it over again, what would we do differently? What was that transition?
Yeah, at the time when we transit, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong here as well, but at the time when we did that transition, we were trying to balance the rolling back into us standing up our normal public health operations as well. And so it became a resource challenge, to be honest with you. In the beginning, when we took it on, the state was doing it first, which was very different than any other infectious disease that we, so that was a challenge for us. Our normal procedures are, we would do case investigation, contact tracing on it. The state held those very close in the beginning. And so locals, local public health agencies, especially those who had the capacity, and I will say, we were very fortunate, we had the capacity because we had the support of our board and our administration and other leadership to be able to staff for that. But we felt very strongly on taking those on because we were able to process those in a timely manner. We were finding that we were getting cases two, three weeks, a month, several months after they had, you know, had tested positive and by that time, it's too late and right, and you're not mitigating spread. So when we did hand them back over to the state at that time, it was merely to be able to function in a way where we were able to go back to the majority of our normal operations.
Did you do it the same if you were going to do it again?
We would have had our cases from the get-go.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that everyone knows what case follow-up is, maybe you want to just give us a thought.
Yeah, so quickly with case investigation or contact tracing, when somebody tests positive, you want to be able to get to them within the first two to three days, right, to help minimize that spread. So we would call them, we would ask about, you know, who are your close contacts? Are you, do you have opportunities? Were you working somewhere during your infectious period? Were you around others during your infectious period? Can we get those names to be able to reach out to those individuals? Can you reach out to those individuals, right? Again, it's just trying to reduce that spread of the disease. And so that is a core function of public health for infectious disease response.
And we do that with other diseases routinely. It's just not visible to the broader community.
Correct.
So tuberculosis or sexually transmitted diseases or other things.
Yep.
Yes. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To our director, this is probably about as big a public health emergency as we could probably contemplate. What was the role of the county public health board? In other words, in fact, the county board acting as a public health board? Did they play a substantive role in this strategy and implementation of everything?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. And I think in hindsight, we've had some discussions around this, but we did come to the county board, every county board meeting for.
Just procedurally, did you come as, did you come to the county public health board or the county board of commissioners?
Well, our county board serves as our board of health. And so it plays a dual role, which probably isn't always communicated probably as well as it should be. But yeah, we came around decision-making, around how we were functioning within the response, for the ability to be able to stand up our continuity of operations plan within incident command structure, to be able to allow staff from other areas to not do their normal daily job in order for us to be able to respond as we did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To that point, I think it's an interesting conversation that we might want to have at some point because it's, we really don't distinguish when we're the board of health and one of the county board. And it's amazing how many different public health structures there are in the state of Minnesota. So we're one of the places that has a single health department that is countywide and the county board is the board of health. And there are times that I think, like we do with the HRA, that we might want to say, okay, this meeting's adjourned, the county board meeting's adjourned, and now we're going to go be the board of health. Because otherwise, we don't spend as much time on some of the public health issues. And it also, it just kind of conflates with things. So I'm just throwing that out as an observation of my own that, as I work on the state committee health advisory council, I'm realizing that never seeing ourselves as the board of health has some downsides for public health and for communicating the role of the county board with public health. So it's been on the back of my mind and this is an opportunity to say it's on the back of my mind. I think we want to talk about that at some point. Mr. Gransey, did you have a comment?
He does have a follow-up. Very, I'll just consider.
Before, I just want, on your list of strengths, I think you omitted, I think we're, our community was, benefited greatly from having a local public health department that gave expertise in a timely manner as compared to having to go to St. Paul for updates or to an elected official who knows nothing about what's going on. So I think that should be listed as one of our strengths, is that we provided some good advice that was trusted.
Thank you, Commissioner Tyne. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I agree with you. I mean, one of the few departments around the state that has epidemiology. Any county health departments had to rely on state epidemiology department and they were just completely overloaded. And there's always questions for us as we have resources that aren't available in our region, how we work together on a region as well, but we really have a more depth and breadth in our public health department than most counties are able to have. And it's by choice as well, because we haven't just completely merged public health with social services or, as some departments have done, some counties have done, excuse me.
Thanks.
Good morning, Chairman Wright. Commissioners, my name is Travis Gransey. I'm a deputy county administrator, supporting health housing and human services. I'm really just here to try to help you in regards to what's about to happen or the decisions that you've got in front of you. The resolution that's in your board packet today, there's five items that are actually included in that resolution. And I'll just go over them just really briefly and then bring up item number four, which is something for your consideration. So the first item on that resolution is to repeal the county public health emergency. The second is to repeal the county exercise of expedited powers during that emergency. The third is the meeting to the county board following repeal of emergency. That's something that this board has practiced for quite some time now. The fourth is about the meeting of county volunteer boards and commissions, and we'll come back to that one. The fifth is the repeal of the other public health emergency measures. So all of those are in the resolution today. As Denise noted, the federal government is repealing the national public health emergency on the 11th of May. Item number four, if I could draw your attention to that one, that this is the one where there was some discussion. The way the resolution is written right now, it does not continue the remote viewing or participation in those, your committees and board or commissions, if you will. There really are three options there for the board to consider. It is the no remote viewing and participation. It's to permit remote viewing and participation when staff and IT support are available, or it's to permit remote viewing and participation by the public at all meetings. If you recall, I mean, we've shifted to if you're on the board or the commission or the committee, the expectation is that you're there in person. There have been a couple of committees that have adjusted quite well to allowing public viewing. viewing during that committee process. Tom knows a little bit more about what those are and how they work. And so we just need you to be clear in your direction to us, how you want those to go in the future. So I don't know if Tom wants to hop in here, too, because I probably left out a few important details.
Sure. And and I think Ben could certainly chime in about this one, because I think the one that comes to mind, in my mind, anyway, one of the ones that I support is the county planning advisory commission. Maybe that's a little bit unique, but, you know, we're dealing often with people, we have nighttime meetings, meetings in inclement weather, people that are kind of from the far-flung areas of the county. I don't think it's too much of a stretch, and Ben would probably agree with me, that the public has really appreciated the ability to have remote access to those meetings, particularly when we have, you know, contentious issues. So if they're older, they don't necessarily have to get in their car at night or in bad weather and drive down to the government center to attend the meeting in person. And so I know we have a wide variety of volunteer boards and commissions. Some of them have virtually no, you know, remote public access. But I just wanted to comment that at least as far as the county PAC goes, and the way I see it, at least that one's working, it's working well. And I think that the public would would generally say that it's not broke, don't, you know, don't fix it, please continue to allow remote access. Now, you know, Ben had made a commitment, you know, some time ago to make sure that he had staff and he had IT resources available so that he could support that as a as a remote public option. Not all of the volunteer boards and commissions necessarily have that option right now. So I guess if you're asking for my recommendation, I don't know if you are. Number two, or basically where the resources are available, that's what I would recommend, that we that we support that option.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to call out that as part of our recommendations that came out of the reasons of public health issue, providing more more access for the public to attend our meetings. And I'm not exactly sure how how we operationalize that or there's some we had a discussion in one of the committees I was in recently where we were the pros and cons of that. Because there's there's some balance of do we have the equipment? Are you really present? Do we know who's in the meeting? How how do people participate? How are we how are we engaged? And so I'm I'm just calling out that this is a question that we've had a variety of others commenting that if we're if we're seeking public engagement, then making more avenues for engagement is seen positively by the public. But there are logistics issues in handling that. I don't I don't have a recommendation. I'm just calling it out as Mr. Grancy asked us to look at this question and give direction as of today. There's a larger context in outside of the public health emergency of other other community feedback we've had, both in the planning department and now from this joint study.
Chairman, Commissioner, if I could respond to that real quick. The resolution as written today then doesn't give specific direction around this issue to Commissioner Kuskaden's point. It's just mute on on the topic. I mean, it addresses participants of those boards, committees, and commissions being in person. It doesn't address the public access. So I just wanted to, as a point of clarification, mention that that's the way it's written as is right now. And maybe to Commissioner Kuskaden's point, that maybe that isn't up for the board to decide today if it if it goes S stands. I don't know that it Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't prohibit what it is that we're doing right now. It just doesn't explicitly call out that it would be available in all of those settings.
Correct.
So so maybe if in my final comment on that, I mean, as it's written today, if you adopt the resolution as it's read, the practices that we have in place right now would just stay in place.
So, Mr. Chair, that means we would have some of our boards and commissions would be streamed live and some would not, but members would be expected to be present in order to form quorum and vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would be we'd have variation.
We would have variation, yeah. And we have had variation throughout.
Commissioner Tine.
A couple of points. One, I was surprised that there wasn't a fourth option where remote viewing was allowed, but not participation. Because it's it's right now, we have it's all or nothing, it seems like, in our three choices. And two, my problem with number two is is it makes it available when when the support is available, but really, it's up to us whether the support is available. And we could choose to have every commission meeting in this room and and have support available. I would think that would be be better off that boards that are decision-making, like PAC, would would allow this, but boards that are more informational and advisory would not allow this.
And truth is, Commissioner, that is the way it's really set up right now. Most of the other boards and committees and commissions that we're talking about are advisory in nature.
Yep.
So I have a broader question. So what is in front of us today is specific to the public health emergency. Is there a way to decouple this discussion we're having right now? Because clearly, it is one that needs some more intention and detailed discussion for us to come to agreement. So what is in place that addresses board participation in a different place, not tied to the public health emergency that we're repealing?
I certainly think you could pass a resolution, a separate resolution, just on that topic at a later date and not affect what you're trying to do here today. Sure.
Yeah. My suggestion is is that we don't need to decouple it today. Commissioner Kuskaden already has pointed out that this is probably a discussion at a later date that we would like to look at, all of our participation in our committees, advisory groups, task forces, to make sure that we are doing the right thing to get public input. So if that's all right with you, then we'd leave that at a later discussion.
But if we pass that today with this language in here, that is, go ahead, Heidi.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I believe that the way it's written today, because we just are mute on this point, doesn't say it must be one way or the other. If you pass this resolution today, it'll work just fine for us to come back later and look at this specific issue for advisory boards and commissions. And I think the advantage to just passing what we have today is that it's not going to mess up what's already going well, particularly with the planning advisory commission. It doesn't make a change to that without really thinking about, well, wait a minute, what would that mean for the way that they are allowed to get input right now? So that's what I would recommend, that you go with this today, and we'll bring it back to you in some form. I don't know if it'll be at a board meeting or a retreat or somewhere else, to look specifically at how you want to do this. Do you need consistencies? And is is consistency more important than than anything else? Or do we want to do this in a advisory board by advisory board fashion?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm comfortable voting on on this with the language as it is today. And and I also am in favor of continuing this larger discussion as Commissioner Kuskaden recommended.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, with that in mind, I'll move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to move the resolution.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You both say no? All right, the motion carries. The emergency is over. We have some questions for you.
Think, you know, this is sort of a end to what was a really, really amazing, challenging period of time that our public health staff led, but really affected all of our departments. The emergency response, the collaboration, the the depth of engagement with the broader community, the ability to be flexible and continuously learn as things just kept evolving, the focus on the well-being of our own employees, the mental health of our employees, was was not taken up by most other counties in the way that this staff said this is this is this is a crisis that has implications for our well-being as as a staff. And if we're not well, we're not going to be serving our community well. I just think it's maybe, you know, we had we had a we had a big, well, we had a big celebration when we thought it was all done before Omicron came out. And we had pins, and we had speakers, and we had rah-rah. And now we're just saying, oh, it's over. And I think I think that maybe the celebration was too soon, but the gratitude that the community must have for for all that happened and that we the pride we have in the staff response and the community response is is very real. And I don't want this moment to pass because it was a once, not in hopefully not a lifetime, once in a century, kind of hopefully, experience that we we will never, hopefully, go through again. So thank you to our public health people, but thank you to all of our administrative staff and all of our line workers who really did all they could to protect our residents and to respond as quickly and judiciously, as comprehensively as possible, and tried new things and learned all along the way. So just an expression of gratitude. Thank you.
To add to that. And you did all of that while navigating a polarized political climate and and navigating misinformation and disinformation. And and you maintained this response with with grace, humility, and and stability. And that was an enormous, tremendous gift that you gave to our our community. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Right. So I have just a few questions. First of all, I know that you listed euphemistically our opportunities. But is there more specific things that you're going to recommend to the state of Minnesota and to our own board, the things that we should have in place?
Chairman, I'm board. Thank you. Great question. And we actually have had some opportunities with the Minnesota Department of Health to be able to provide and to participate in what they call a hot wash as well, based on their how they responded. Yeah, hot wash, that's the official term. And we did provide input of which one around timely data sharing, one around including local jurisdictions around decision-making that is going to affect their local jurisdiction. I know that's a challenge all the time, but so we've been able to provide those up. And I will say, as we look at the topic that's been circulating through the legislature currently and that Commissioner Kuskaden is helping to lead as well, when we're looking at public health infrastructure, it is around those types of things. We have to have an equitable way for every local health department to be able to access data. We have to have a a system in place where all can communicate messaging in a timely effort. We have to have systems, technology, databases, et cetera, that are up to date and functional. So when we look at some of those systems that were in place and for years had talked about, like, they're they're not talking to each other, we're not getting correct information, we've been able to to communicate that back. And as a result of that, there are legislative funds from prior, I can't even remember, last year, two years ago, that came out of the legislature looking at advancing public health infrastructure. And so we currently in Olmsted County were awarded one of those. We're specifically working on data and EPI surveillance, and we're doing that regionally, right? And so, like, how do you do this regionally as well, in a manner that that we're able to work together? For our for our board, you asked about for our local elected officials, right? I mean, I think some of the things we talked about, like setting a priority that incident command structure and ICS trainings are important for all staff, right? Any one of us could be called in a tornado in a in a, I mean, I hate to even put this stuff out there, right? But like, you know, bombing, what have you. And we all need to understand how to work through that structure. And oftentimes, and it will happen, that may mean somebody now oversees you that didn't oversee you or et cetera. So those are just things off the top of my head.
Sure. So so we'll be more complete, is what you're saying. Right? You know, I'm always amazed at the English language when people come up with terms hot wash. It means absolutely nothing. Or it means anything, you know? And basically, we're going to do a critique of the system and see where we screwed up, is really what you're saying. All right. Now, my next question, and it might be for you, it might be for Megan. By the way, congratulations, Megan. When is the next pandemic? Oh, it's it's I know it's kind of a silly question, but it's kind of important. All right? Because we have had pandemics fairly regularly, and we were looking for this one probably 10 or 15 years ago because it was overdue, according to when pandemics happen. So the next question is, is the next pandemic the same distance away? Or is it half the distance? Go ahead. Okay, never mind. You don't have to answer. I see you're hesitant. Now, the reason I ask that is because there's good evidence out there, which you probably have read more than I have, is the next pandemic is going to be a lot shorter as far as distance away than the last one was. All right? And there's lots of reason for that, but you can come back and explain that later. But the reason I ask that is is because the last pandemic, they went through this stuff, and nobody could find the manure. I mean, nobody, nobody could say, geez, what did we do? I mean, they had to go back through all kinds of records and novels and everything else to figure this out. We ought to have one on the board. But you see, the difficulty with with situations like this is that the state of Minnesota disassembled all the labs. We had no labs to send the COVID tests to, so it cost the country an enormous amount of money to set up those labs. We had disassembled public health. There are some counties that that maybe had one public health nurse. I mean, we can't judge by what Olmsted did because we're unusual in that situation and very fortunate. But the state of Minnesota allowed that. And in some cases, there was one public health for several counties, one public health nurse for several counties. So those are the kinds of things that I think that we always need to be prepared because we don't know when that pandemic is coming. But it's possible that it'll be here in 50 years rather than 100 years or sooner. So that's why we have to have a public health department that is always active, always ready, and always available, because we don't know when those that next one will come. And I might add that we were very fortunate that the COVID virus was not as lethal as possibly the next one. So we were lucky that it wasn't Ebola. Anyway, thank you very much. I don't know, does anybody else have any other comments?
I have to say. As as one who was in St. Paul 20 years, I don't ever remember that we disassembled what is truly an outstanding public health lab on on the Capitol complex in every sense of the word, from the standpoint of not its size, its operations, its precautionary measures, and so on and so forth. I don't I don't remember we ever did that. And of course, we all know that it took a while to even develop a COVID test. So and and that would, you know, that's on the world landscape. There was a good while that the entire world did not have a test adequately test for COVID. But nonetheless, a lot of conversation about this.
Yeah, well, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We do appreciate your service. Board and committee reports. All right, we'll start at the middle this time. Mr. Tine, you have a board and committee report.
No board reports. I can report that every one of the commissioners went on a tour of Channel One and found it very beneficial and allowed their efforts in the community. It's nice.
Commissioner Kuskaden, do you have your report?
Mr. Chair, yes. I actually, many of us were at the Chamber of Commerce Local Government Conversation last week, but not all of us were. And each one of the local units of government sort of presented their future, their their strategic plans.
So, the county, the city, the school district, and Parks Department for the city. But I thought that the Rochester Public Schools had a graphic that describes where they are with their strategic plan. And I just thought it would be useful for all of us to have a copy of that. So, for those of you who weren't able to join us, I know that you were there, Mr. Chair. I just thought that that would be a useful document, a point of reference because we know that the school district is deeply engaged. And then, speaking of the school district at the Chamber Government Forms yesterday, the superintendent reported that they will be able to release some information about the cybersecurity breach that they recently had. And he said it was a very, very serious breach. And so, we had a little bit of conversation at Admin today with Mr. Peabody about how are we learning from that experience and how are we preparing? And it's been a very important reminder for, as much as the chairman hates our 16-letter authentication, that it is an important piece of our protection. So, just to call that out. And then, I also attended, and I know the chair did as well, Workforce Development, Inc., which we support, had a summit last week on employment. And I found it a really interesting summit, even though I was only able to stay for about half of it. But among the most important things that kind of came out of that conversation was that we have the workforce we're going to get, period. That Minnesota has not been growing, that what we have today is 18- to 12-year-olds will be our workforce. And some concern about the status of that workforce of that across the world with the OECD, 41 countries, we are at ranked 272nd in terms of the preparation of our students in terms of literacy and numeracy. Our scores have been falling down. And numeracy, our scores for ACTs and SAT testing have been falling down. And so, we have some real challenges for us as a country to really look at the people we have or the workforce of our future. And we are having some competitive issues. They also talked a lot about the benefit cliff. We talked here about the benefit cliff. But the benefit cliff, as they talked about it, was when you lose SNAP and you're about to use childcare, it creates, it impacts on labor. It creates what the speaker called parking lot employees, people who are really not in the workforce because they can't afford to be in the workforce because of the benefit cliff. And so, that's sort of another focus. And they called on us to invest heavily in the technology evolution because our workforce is going to need continuous learning. Another thing that I thought was interesting, and I checked with Mr. Currie, is they called out, you know, the labor force we have is the labor force we're going to have. And so, they called on us to look at particular people who are often overlooked, labor pools, our new Americans. We aren't always thinking about how do we be inclusive and welcoming and deal with the language differences and the cultural differences to welcome new Americans? And candidly, I think there's a report out just last week from Deed that our source of new labor is going to be immigration. And so, how do we really gear up? And then, those with disabilities. I don't know about you, but I've seen a few more people in the retail establishments that I use that clearly are people with disabilities who are now employed. But, you know, how do we look to tap that labor force? And then, another one that would be dear and dear to our hearts is people released from correctional facilities. You know, once you have an arrest record, you are less employable. So, how do we help people earn their high school diploma while they're incarcerated? How do we get them into employment? And evidence evidently is that once into employment, they become very loyal employees very often. And so, I found those two presentations kind of thought-provoking for us as we look to our future with employment. So, those are the two things I would call out today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Padoki Smith.
Thank you. Commissioner Dine did mention our tour of the Channel 1. And I have a few more things that I'd like to share about it, just in case anyone watching is learning about Channel 1 for the first time or possibly in need of food support and assistance or knows someone in need of food assistance. So, Channel 1 is a regional food bank, and it's the largest hunger relief organization in southeast Minnesota. It's the food bank for 14-county region. And it's the food shelf for Olmsted County. And one thing about the tour that I found impressive is that Channel 1 is a super shelf, which is a food shelf that makes the healthy choice the easy choice. And they invite shoppers to visit weekly, and most shoppers visit monthly. And it's easy to sign up and easy to check in with no documentation or identification needed. It's enrolled in it through an honor system. And there's also mobile markets available for folks who might live, low-income seniors who live in a high-rise, or for public schools or mobile home parks, that kind of thing. So, that's my public service announcement for Channel 1 Food Shelf.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rasmann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would call your attention to this handout that is in front of you. The opioid settlement funds are a topic that we have received presentations on from staff during our last two committee meetings. And this handout contains some pertinent information that will give you a good overview of that opioid settlement. Our staff, led by Abby Tricker, presented a very thoughtful and thorough process that they have put together to include, as you can see at the bottom right-hand corner of the handout, a diverse list of organizations in Olmsted County who are part of the process of understanding how we work together and really put a good process in place to allocate the funds that we will be receiving. This is the beginning of an 18-year journey. So, we need to keep that into perspective. And what they've presented to us are both a short-term and a long-term strategy. And long-term, at this point, only being two and a half years. But you will see this come to you on the consent agenda. We will see it come to us on the consent agenda next month. So, once you've looked at this, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Commissioner Padoki Smith, Commissioner Cascaden, or myself. And we'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sancho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Incidentally, I was just watching a documentary, I think it was on the Smithsonian last night or somewhere, on opioids and their effect on Americans. I think it was 670,000 deaths. Incredible, incredible public issue. And I enjoyed too the Channel 1 opportunity. And I guess it should probably come as no surprise, but when you hear it from the director talking about the inflationary pressures that are affecting families and food and their very existence from the standpoint of hunger, it's really, I think it's telling, at least for me, and coming to understand that more and more people are having to avail themselves of that resource, wonderful as it is. But then, inflationary pressures are also affecting them and their ability to even get food. So, it's a critical program within our community. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be there. I can't think of any committee meetings. My committee meetings seem to have been on Channel 196 watching the legislature, as terrible as that might be. And as you just go through that list of omnibus bills that are going through, whether it's transportation, whether it's elections, whether it's public health, on and on, whether it's even commerce, there's a piece of counties and virtually every one of them taxes and so on and so forth. And so, there will be a lot of catching up to do at the end of the legislative session in terms of what the overall impacts are and how we're going to have to need to react to those changes. And I think it will be a fairly big job. One small thing, tiny in the grand perspective of things up there was an amendment which Senator Bolden put on a bill, an environmental bill last week that had to do with, and we've talked about it, not necessarily, I've not been on this board and we've talked about it, but it has been talked about. And that is the whole idea of expanding high-powered rifles to shoot deer across Minnesota. Currently, we are in a shotgun-only zone, and that's about half of the state of Minnesota. The southern half is in that. Senator Raskowski had an amendment to include the entire state. Senator Bolden amended that with an exclusionary provision for Olmsted County, which passed 66 to 1. And so, now that has to go to the House in conference and be decided. And I'm not sure exactly where this current board was. As I understand, last year, the board was in agreement with this exclusion. And I know the sheriff was as well. But I wouldn't want to talk to the House author without some sense of a wink and a nod, so to speak, as to whether or not continue to have that position for Olmsted County. Is there a wink and a nod?
Well, I think that we've already talked about the fact that we didn't want high-powered rifles in Olmsted County. I think that that was a consensus. Is that what you're asking?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would agree that I think we probably, we did not have it as one of our legislative priorities this year, but the legislative committee has talked about it in the past. And I would be surprised, but we haven't really polled our new members to see if that's a position they would hold. I would just also say that we, I just want to remind our good commissioner that we don't work alone. We work with our legislative liaison and we work through the legislative committee when we represent the county board's point of view on an issue. So, perhaps, Mr. Chair, you, I am comfortable with that rifle prohibition. But maybe we should poll our members just to make sure everyone's comfortable or at least ask them to speak out if they would have any reservations about our taking that position.
And we did ask that also at a township board meeting.
Yeah, this came up a year or so ago, at a township board, and they were...
They were adamant.
They were more adamant than maybe I was on the whole issue, at least for Olmsted County.
Okay. Very good. So, do you have a suggestion?
Well, I'd say heads chin. Yes, we're okay.
I think that's enough. Thank you.
So, once again, the chair has... So, once again, the chair has measured the commission correctly. Thank you very much. All right. So, I have just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you to Workforce Development for recognizing how good Olmsted County is as an employer. And that's no small feat. But my thanks not only go to Workforce Development, but also to our own employees because it's our employees that make this a good place to work. All right? They're the ones that have a good working relationship with their fellow employees. They're the ones that create a welcoming environment for all employees. They're the ones that are working on the same issues that we're all interested in. And we know that our workforce is going to increase in diversity and that certainly there are sometimes cultural differences and differences of how families operate and how people operate at work. But we're in this together to understand all of our other employees and work together. So, our employees really need thanks for that. And once again, I want to point out that Olmsted County is ahead of the game in looking at recruiting of our employees. And one of the things that, to add to what Commissioner Cascaden had to say, was that one of the things that we learned is that we are not going to import our employees from other places because they're just as short on workers as we are. So, it's not like there's a ready source of them out there that we can gather and bring them in. However, Olmsted County has recognized that we do have a ready source of employees. It's just that they're in 10th grade or 9th grade right now and that they're already familiar with Olmsted County and that they are part of the school district. And we started on that process. Now, I called it the Career Academy, but that's not the official name of it. But we started to cooperate with the Boys and Girls Club of bringing in people to look at jobs within Olmsted County. And I appreciate Mr. Currie's efforts in that as well because that's where we're going to start getting our employees from. And it's a really important process because we're looking at children in families that we already serve as the county. So, it's not only that they understand the system from a user point of view, but also it's a process for them to move into the middle class and move into high-paying jobs that they can take care of their own families. So, it's a really good process. And I'm hoping that the county board will continue to support that and maybe enlarge that so that we can include people and students from around the county, not only in the Rochester school system but other school systems as well. So, and then, I also wanted to point out that when Senator Klobuchar was at the Rasmann Farm talking about agriculture, we were able to make a connection with Chuck Ackman, and who is the agriculture aide for out of Senator Klobuchar's office. And again, we are ahead of the curve is because the nitrate toxicity in water is getting a great deal of attention. Star Tribune article was in a couple of days ago talking about the rising levels of nitrates in the water. And our own program now is receiving quite a bit of interest from around the region as well as from Chuck Ackman. And let's see, Skip Langer and Martin Larson probably will be having a conversation, a Zoom conversation with Chuck Ackman to learn about that. I don't know if, I know we have Kate nodding, but they want to know, how did you do that? And what prompted you to do that? And can we replicate this in other areas? Do you want to add anything to that? No, okay. So, but the idea, of course, is that we're one of the counties that has more expertise than others in attacking this. So, it's once again that our county employees are very good and ahead of the curve in many cases. So, we do appreciate that. So, we'll see what comes out of that. You know, ultimately, we'll probably ask for money.